Okay, 5:30 will be... Seeing the rally, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Harry, may I ask to look at the minutes in the last meeting?
Please.
Ed and Bill, more than a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Is there anything new after the agenda? All under Kate's motion to approve it?
So.
And then, again, more. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Roger, on the roof of the courthouse, please.
Okay. Last fall, at budget time, I had talked to Tedca America to give me an estimate on what they thought it would be to redo the roof of the courthouse this year. And got an estimate, but there got to be a bit of a mix-up. They kind of took it as a job that we were just going to do this summer without going out on bids. So, we got an estimate of them for $83,927. And I talked to Lonnie, and he said, "Well, we don't have to go out on bids until it reaches $100,000." So legally, we can just give it to Tedca and just have them do it. I guess they'd already penciled us in as a project they're gonna do in the summer. Right, Ken?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess my question is, do you want to go out for bids or just award it to Tedca? Or what do you want to do?
What's the timeframe? When are they gonna start?
It'd be about a month out, yeah. It'd be a summer project.
So late May, early June?
Yep.
Now, we're, David done some repair work, actually way back like in February, so we had an issue with a leak, and that took care of that. So I mean, we're, it seemed to be doing good. Didn't have any leaks here after this last rainfall, so. You know, if you want to award it to them, I guess I don't see a problem, but...
You have it in your budget, Roger?
Yes. Yeah, it was budgeted for. So yes, we have the money and the budget.
Would you have an end date on the project?
Uh, no, we're in Carrington right now, the pasta plant, so that's about a month. Like I said, probably early June start, and this'd be about a month project. Five weeks.
Take five weeks?
Yep.
Roughly, four thousand?
Roughly, yes.
When was the last time we did it, Roger?
I think the last time we done it was 1988.
Yee.
And that's gonna be to peel back all the rock?
Yep, they take off all the rock and replace the rubber and put it all back down again, new metal edging, and assess the new roof as a... Or at least the rubbering weight has a 15-year warranty on it.
Is there a warranty?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years, yep.
For the whole room?
Correct, yep.
There's nobody else in town that can handle it, right?
There's nobody else in town that can handle it, I'm the same way.
So would be going out of town if we wanted to do it in other words?
I would do it for it.
I'll say it.
Ed, Ken. Is there any discussion?
Just one question, Roger. Eight years, I met him and insulted him money away either for this project?
What?
From the last, from 1988, never put any money away for this project.
Well, no, but we...
I'm just kind of kidding, you know, but...
Oh. But it's budgeted for.
Maybe we need to go deep on that.
Yeah, I think that's what we need, you know.
Maybe it's something that...
You know, we put 15,000 dollars in that budget fund every year, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Can you do that?
But you don't want?
Can you do that, Kevin?
Well, you can't... You can't take money from year to year, can you?
Basically, what we did is the county loan fund, which now is the general fund. We did have some surplus from one year, but it was very little, probably 15,000. So basically, I figured in 195,000 for repairs in the courthouse. I think it's 195. I have to live with the budget. But anyway, we have money set aside for emergencies within the courthouse.
But are we putting that fund and set it aside every year?
Yes, it's in a fund number.
But I mean, you put that every year?
No, we just, it just rolls over every year. You just budget, you budget every year for what's gonna happen. If there's an emergency, we usually plan on... Like, how much extra did you include?
Just for this year, you mean?
Yeah.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
I already told Rex that we're not moving into the courthouse, so...
Yep. So we plan on things every year, like the roof, and then the year before it was the paving. And some here, I'm sure, we're gonna have to paint the courthouse.
Paint? There's nothing to paint.
That green, that green.
What's wrong with that?
Well, we did new windows and air conditioning. We did a lot of work all the years. That worked out.
Well, I don't know. We replace windows as needed, you know? Almost every year, there's probably three or four that we'll do.
Yeah.
But now, you know, once we get the roof down here, we should be in pretty good shape for a while because we've had the memorial building, that was done four years ago, and the armory was done five, six years ago, the roof, so...
And the cooling and heating.
And yeah, I mean, both the boiler and conditioner are pretty good.
Brand new.
So we should be pretty good for a while.
Yep.
All right, huh?
Our...
Boylins, all right?
Yep.
That's the next one.
Well, I wonder where you...
I got no real idea.
No, the water's, the water's already done, same with the heating.
That's the heating and cooling, yeah.
But to kind of answer your question, for instance, if we know we need water heaters seven years from now, we can't take 15,000 every year all over and all over.
You can't do that. Legally, you can't do that.
Because it's a letting.
So we put 15 in there every year, then?
No.
We're not home alone.
Um, I think that's a roll call. Okay? Wilson?
Aye.
Perkins?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightbon?
Aye.
Ayesir? Aye. Motion carries. Uh, do you want to talk about...
Yeah. I showed a few of you the concrete out by the parking lot next to the courthouse. It's been breaking and cracking for a few years now, and last fall, I had them do some Dakota Med jockey come in, and they raised up part of it. And that did help, but I think this spring, some of it sank down again. And I think that at least those two end sections between the buildings of the concrete, and there's one section coming this way, like on the sidewalk out here, we have to get that all replaced to avoid the water pooling right there because when the water, it's just able to run right down into the corner of the courthouse. We haven't had issues yet, but sooner or later, it's gonna start.
The project about the half the size of this room right here, so that...
Yeah, the whole thing, yeah, I don't think would be more than...
Right, where the commissioners...
Wouldn't be that hard. It looks to me like it'll drain after it's done, so...
Yeah. And hopefully, it'll should drain a little better, at least not pool, or nearly as badly, anyway.
Are you willing to get goods on that, or are you just going to do it?
I imagine they should get a couple different estimates.
Make a motion, we have a budget, it sounds about it.
I'll say it.
Any other discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Fred Gramps came in this morning, and I don't know if any of you have ever heard of pickleball, but it's kind of like tennis, only on a much smaller scale. He approached me about this last winter, so they wanna start that in the summertime here in the gym because most of them are snowbirds, and they're back here, and they play a lot wherever they're at in the south. They're just kind of wanting to get games going here. And the Park Board said they will ensure them. And Fred understood that in the summertime, there's not much school activities, or no school activities, but there is wedding dances and a few other things. So if they... We can work out a schedule for them, and I think like Monday and Wednesday night should be pretty good, with the exception of a few here and there. If you want to approve their coming in and doing this, or... I mean, it shouldn't be any cost to the county.
Is it under the offices of the Park Board, then?
Pardon me?
Is it...
Well, through the Park Board?
Yeah, basically, yes.
I think we should do it to keep some pace. Park Board uses a memorial building in the summer, so?
Park Board does not use a memorial building in the summer, no. The only thing that really goes on in the summer is wedding dances, but...
Is the agreement here, or with the Park Board?
Uh, I suppose. But Terry Wallace was in today with Fred Gramps, and I asked him, I said, "Are you gonna ensure these guys either?" So...
Should be no problem.
I don't really see, you know, much...
Well, under original agreement, that should be no problem.
It's just an added program. Do we need a motion to that? We shouldn't, should we?
We should have one.
I suppose, just such a...
Oh, maybe.
Okay. Make a motion to a local... Pickleball plan?
Pickleball in the memorial building, under the Park Board.
I'll say it.
All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're probably coming around with everybody to join.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
So, I've contacted a few contractors to try and see if we can get the roof of the Sheriffs Hall fixed, but never found one that really wants to do it yet. But every spring, I try and find somebody else, and I called three today that I guess I hadn't called before, so we'll see where it goes.
Is this what the fire was cut in the top of?
Eh, I don't know, but...
Oh.
That's all I got.
You can...
So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right, I guess first off, I'd like to, I guess, pay the software maintenance on my, the GIS software for the county. It's $3,000. It's been budgeted for.
I'll make the motion for that, based on the GIS stuff.
Second.
Any other discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
And second of all, I've got, I guess I gave you a proposal for out-of-state travel. Again, this, June, I guess, is a little earlier than last year.
And that's to attend that annual conference that you've been doing for seven years?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to allow Steve for out-of-state travel.
Well, second.
And you've got those, both of those items, but you didn't hear?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I like how you give us the report when you come back from there. That's helpful for us to know where your head went. We all did get the, we got a new update on the county website and stuff, and I'd like to see that that's working out totally through here, too.
All was in favor of sending Steve to San Diego, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I guess the third thing is just, for your information, will be presentation on Thursday by pictometry. They've been here before, and they take aerial photos, and I guess, from many different angles, so it's a unique product, I guess, that some people around here wanted to see again. He was driving through the area at time, so he's coming on Thursday at 2:00 to the Armory.
And then, would anybody who wants to could...
Yeah, anyone. Can stop on by. And I guess lastly, I guess I sent out the link last night to the demonstration of the new website, and this is what it looks similar to. It don't look like this, but maybe a few different pictures and something moved around, but basically...
Will it be a scrolling thing?
Yeah, or...
You'll just change it periodically?
Yeah. I don't, well, we can, you know, change it by every five seconds or every time you refresh the page, I guess. But we'll add different pictures and, you know, change those up.
I looked on it, and it seems like it's very, very simple to maneuver. That made me happy because I'm a junior on websites, so I thought it was excellent.
Everything takes a little bit of getting used to.
Right, but I...
I like it so that you can see, you can click on all the forward and backwards on all the schedules and stuff like that that are coming up, and people can keep up with what's coming up.
Links for everything that was on the old one, plus more, so... And, you know, we're gonna be having training next week for the few people that have, are going to be editing their own content, I guess, like the Water Guard and Social Services.
So they'll be going on their own and updating?
Yeah, all right.
So Kevin, will you be updating road work and road closures and those kinds of things on there as well? I think that would be pretty...
It scares me. Call us, Steve, do it, but yeah.
It's real easy.
It's very easy to do. I would guess Brent would be able to handle a little bit of those problems.
We'll update it as long as we can, whether it's me, Brent, or...
Yeah.
Or Steve, but you will update it, so like, you know, when there's road work going on and that sort of thing.
Yep.
Yeah, hold limits.
Okay.
Looks good, Steve.
Yeah. Double it.
And, yeah, it should be, it's on schedule for completion by June, I guess, so...
In a month, it'll be, all those columns will be to market, right?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Steve?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the work you put into getting that up and operation. Rhonda's in Bismarck, so we're gonna have Adam give us a little update on the attended care program.
Yeah, we met yesterday as a group between Sidney, Rhonda, myself, police chief, and Sheriff Nelson, and just talked about how things are working and where we're going. Seems as though everything is working very well so far. I don't have numbers on how much it's been utilized, but it's been used decently, I think, up to this point. Sidney's still out attempting to get more orders. We're at seven right now. We're shooting for hopefully around 12, and she had, I think, four more that were interested that she was in the process of going to be interviewing, so hopefully we can add some more. She is, how they're going to work is, we have the $500 set aside that we're previously paying. So what's gonna happen is, they're gonna use the $300 out of that 500, then, to pay Sidney in addition to, you know, kind of for these supervisory tasks. And then that additional 200, we bandied about the idea of possibly using that as an on-call pay tip or deal. So anybody that's on call during the week would receive a little bit of a stipend to kind of keep people involved. We haven't finalized that yet, but that was just an idea of what was gonna happen, a thought process. Now that it's up and running, it seems to be working well. We had the discussion about the possibility of would we charge other counties an intake fee, something like that, if we use it? We didn't come up with a dollar figure or anything yet, but we're still working on that. We are going to put out a letter to the other counties in our juvenile district, which I can't, I think it's, there's three counties, and then, can't remember the three counties off the top of my head, and then the other two that are also part of the LEC will pad letters as well, telling them about the service that's available, and then gauging their interest, and we'll see who's gonna be interested in using it in addition, and then we'll have to figure out some kind of a fee schedule. We're working on a camera system to put in each of the rooms, so we have recording devices just to make sure it's safety and security and for anything that, if anything were to occur. Steve, Sheriff Nelson thought he would have enough money in his budget under his, he could probably fit it in because it doesn't look like it's gonna be in that $800 range. So we're gonna, but we'll bring that in front of the commission, I believe, once we determine how that's gonna work. And then the only other thing is, we had the discussion about how the pay structure's going to work, simply because if three of the people that are backups to the, you know, so if we can't get one of those seven employees to come in currently, are social services workers, so Sidney and Rhonda, and I can't, I think it's Kristy, if I remember correctly. Under how the structure works, since they are exempt employees, if we pay them, like, we would technically be paying them twice, is how we, so we're gonna talk with Lonnie about it and see how exactly he feels that would work. And then, I was gonna bring it up to Elizabeth, and I forgot, I guess, when I stopped here, but, and see how the structure would work, and we might need a, some kind of a resolution from us or a motion that would allow it to happen, but we gotta figure it out because my understanding is that if it's, if they're an exempt employee, they're technically, since they're social services, they're technically on call at all times. So you're a salaried employee, so since you're not an hourly wage, it kind of raises some questions. Not that it's necessarily a bad thing, but it's just, we have to figure out to make sure we're doing everything correctly. So we're gonna run it fast, and I need to talk with Elizabeth, vote it, make sure we get everything lined up, but other than that, everything seems to be firm as we will, and hopefully we'll utilize it a little more. We got the grant for the oil school suspension piece, so that'll start in August. And we're using it as a shelter care setup as well, so we're utilizing the rooms about as much as we possibly can, I think, at this point, so hopefully it'll continue to work. So, any questions, I guess?
Does that serve as detention for juveniles that are in the interim between court and, and the time that they get picked up in?
Uh, it depends, yeah, it would depend on if the police or the sheriff's department determines that they are safe and they can use attended care, I guess, so...
So would you generate any trips to Grand Forks, then?
Assuming that, yeah, assuming, it depends on if they're charged or not, I guess. If they're charged, and then, I don't know exactly how that would be handled. That'd be a good question for the sheriff, but...
That'd be nice.
Yeah. If it's a low-level thing, it's something where they utilize attended care, I believe, and then, you know, keep off the order, is how I understand it, at least.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, Kevin, you're up.
Okay, handed out a sheet of the tallies to the gravel bids, and we took, it's like this. So, start on the top of that page, roll oil listed first. We use MC-800 way more than 3,000, so my recommendation would be to accept a bid from Cali Mid, since there were a little bid on MC-800.
I'll make a motion to do that, if you wanna do them individually.
I do, yeah. We probably won't be using hardly any 3,000, but what that 3,000 is for, are the Honor Chips Hill projects, and it's usually up to the contractor to supply that oil, so...
I'll say it, motion.
All was in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Okay, and the second one was for hot mix overlays or our paper patches that we do. Strata was low on everything but picking them up at the plant, but generally, we've accepted both quotes for these, for these, in case Strata doesn't have a plant in town, or Tri-State is closer, or something like that. That way, we can use the prices for both, both companies. We would, we would use Strata for the major projects, and if we wanted to pick some up at the plant ourselves, we'd use Tri-State.
So your recommendation is to accept a bid on both of them?
Correct.
So since Tri-State doesn't have a bid on the first floor, then it just basically means that if we do have to use them, we're gonna pay cost on that date, basically?
Yep. They will give us that, like they said, but, yep.
Okay.
For the motion to approve the hot mix overlay bid?
I'll say it.
Give me a second. Any other discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Okay, and then the gravel bids, the first one listed there is around the kind 10. We had three bids, and super construction was the lowest at $40,600. Hopefully, I'll do those separately, probably separate motions for each one. That's all we've done in the past.
I'll make a motion to accept a little bid for gravel.
I'll say it.
Is that a roll call? Yeah, okay. Okay, Brown?
Aye.
Perkins? Wilson?
Aye.
Lightbon?
Aye.
Ayesir? Aye.
And then the prairie road, there were a few bids there also, but super was a little bitter there, about $21,875. Probably that won't should approve that.
I'm looking on second. Any other discussion? Roll call? Lightbon?
Aye.
Perkins?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Brown? Ayesir? Aye.
Okay, just to echo on that, I had a few calls today about the Ramsey-Nelson coming line over by Bartlett. Somehow, like that dropped off from our five-year road plan, but the last one gravel was 2010, so we should probably, I think we should make, take bids for graveling that stretch of road again this summer. I have it in my budget, so I guess at this time, I'd just be looking for a motion to advertise the graveling on the Ramsey-Nelson line by Bartlett.
How many miles is that?
I think it's about eight, eight or nine.
How many motions to advertise?
Second.
I'm gonna motion in a second. Any other discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Okay, and then moving on, second one, the quotes for vehicles. I got quotes from all the dealers in town, just the numbers. The state bid was $33,517. I got a quote from Marketplace for an expedition for $35,999. Lake Chevrolet for a Toyota, or not Toyota, for a Tahoe was $42,500. And Lake Toyota for a Sequoia was $46,071. Chrysler put a bid in, but they didn't meet spec, it was an X-size smaller vehicle. They don't offer a vehicle this size. So that's the quotes, or bids I got from the local dealers.
And you said that it was $300 to go to Grand Forks and get it, or?
Yeah, I suppose it wouldn't be that much, but yeah, there's a cost there.
So the Marketplace bid is very competitive?
$2500 more, yeah. Roughly.
Now, Steve did $33,500.
Yeah.
Yeah, with an exhibition.
That's the Ford, right? Yep, it is, yep. Ford Expedition.
Those in Ford are the $800, though. They won't match it.
If you go to Grand Forks and get that, do you have to, uh, go to Grand Forks, go to warranty work or anything like that?
No, they would definitely warranty it, though. I would definitely ask them about that before, but I'm sure that's the way that works.
Just from the standpoint of history, uh, why do we, why do you drive an expedition versus something smaller, just like a state?
I don't know, just, when, when we were doing FEMA work, that was one of the things that came up, was driving those people around, and we needed a vehicle that would handle four people. And that's how I got started. And then also for travel, for, you know, meetings, if other people want to ride along.
And, and that wasn't you when you got it, was it?
No.
You bought that up speed, bucked it?
Yeah, right. Yeah, it would certainly have to be that size, but I mean, that's, that's the bids I was looking at.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, just curious, let's do, what the, what the gravel was. You put out, would you say twelve, twelve hundred a month, fifteen hundred a month?
Twelve hundred a month.
Do you ever have a use, I mean, that you would need a pickup, or, I see?
Well, the thing with a pickup is we can hand it down, but, you know, I would probably drive it till it wasn't drackable anymore. We're ready to trade anyway, so.
Well, pickups cheaper?
Not much.
No. I don't think they are. I, it's, we were just looking at pickups. I would do it in the four one more.
What do you wanna do, Kevin?
I would like to go with the state bid on the, we've got a big lot of them before, but I understand the local dealers too, so I wouldn't have an issue with, I'd say I'm local, but.
Do you have approached Ford to see if they'll match, see if they?
Oh, they won't match a state bid.
They won't? You'd ask them?
But I didn't ask them about warranty work, and I have, I'm sure they would have to do that, I mean, that's longer for the person.
Yep, yep.
What about five hundred dollars is?
Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Anyone wanna make a motion to accept a state bid?
I'll make the motion.
How much did you have budget for?
I had two hundred thousand dollars in line at home, yeah, so we had, uh, we bought the, uh, Lincoln trailer and, gosh, something else I didn't need for about thirty thousand, too. Can't think of what it was.
So you have plenty of money.
Plenty of money, yeah.
And the one you have now has what, a hundred and, you told us, I can't remember.
Hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and sixty, roughly.
So if we drive this the same one more time, where you get ten years of it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready for that.
I'll say a motion.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, under, under the discussion, we've been trying again, um, to debate some, whether or not we should accept all the bids, and that's the reason why we bid, so that's the reason why we made the motion.
How much smaller is the other one?
It's like the Explorer, like what Elizabeth drives, or, uh...
Is it a Wrangler?
Yeah, it's a Dodge.
Highlander Toyota.
What was that, what was the price on that, just out of curiosity?
As long as we don't decide a bid, I mean, I can't hear that number out tonight, but twenty-nine, three ninety-four. But I didn't ask the other dealers.
No.
To go down, yeah, so you can't.
Oh, that was the, the specs, so.
I think the only question is, when did we buy the one you have now? I'll let me hand it for.
An old, old six, I believe.
And it's an old four?
Yeah.
So we must've got it a pretty long miles in that?
Yeah, it's sixty thousand. Not quite sixty, fifty, nine thousand.
Yeah, I mean, the, the only question in my mind is, do we buy something or do we go to use it?
It's worked out with the sheriff and...
Yeah, I mean, we have to keep a good fleet of vehicles, isn't it? Pretty many lot of miles you put on it, it'll last quite a long time, so it's probably better just to invest in it.
Yep.
It'll last.
I think that's free for sixty thousand, I think.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call? Brown?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Lyfon?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Isor?
Aye.
Okay, and then moving on down to FEMA bridge site in Deport Township, I did talk to, see if I can remember, we wanna talk about Wakefield, Billy Wakefield, um, all of the, uh, Jarston Mann and Michael and Jonathan. Talked to Danny Webster. Everybody, basically everybody's in favor of doing this, and I, I think that the bridge there is fine, so we wouldn't have to do anything with that, and they're, they're okay with that, because they don't, if the bridge is in good shape, they don't feel there's any reason to raise it any higher, because once you get across the bridge, there's nothing there to be doing anyway if it's any higher, if that makes sense. So they're all in favor of fixing that road, but leaving the bridge there, if, once we look at it and determine that it's fine. I think that bridge was put in in eighty-eight, so it's not an old structure by any means. So I guess I'd like to see that we just keep pursuing these FEMA sites and fix ones that are feasible to fix and go ahead that way.
What's the match on it?
All of them are gonna be three percent, unless you actually raise them, do the full grade raise, which we wouldn't need to do on this one, then the match goes down, but if you're not doing the full grade raise, then the match is circumcised.
This is our last chance here.
I think it is, yes.
Did we approve the other sites previously?
No.
No, we were gonna discuss it today.
The same way going like south of Trichus Bay, there's some down, down there, the same situation. They're, they're not worth as big a dollar, but I think we'd be wise to put the money into them, and if the farmland is reachable that way, then at least the roads buy more.
Well, I talked to a couple farmers down there, um, I talked to Bob Bladen and Darrell Bybee, his son. Talked to Mark Otteverson, he doesn't really have a lot to do with it, but it'll save a lot of them up to twenty-seven miles not having to come in and go wrong, so, um, they were, they were pretty positive about doing it. You know, there's always a chance that it could go under again, but
Yeah, there is, absolutely.
But, I mean, there's no way, you, you, you know, if we're gonna go on that premise, where do we stop?
You know, that, that is true, there is a possibility that the water come up again, we'd lose everything we did, but the way it's looking now, unless we get a big reinvent or something, and that's possible, but.
At three percent, maybe even if they get a couple years out of it, it's, it's worth our, worth our investment.
Yeah.
Well, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work for twenty-five thousand dollars are matched.
Yeah, on all the different jobs.
On all the different spots put together.
Were you wanting, Kevin, to make a motion, or are you just wanting to move forward with it?
I think a motion to go ahead and advertise for the ground.
I'll say it.
As we've done in the past, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and these are the last of them, is that correct?
Yeah, thirteen, yeah, there's nothing on thirteen, it's gonna be extended, so.
What about the one, um, north of Penn, that pass we did as well, doesn't it?
Yep, that, that is the, that's the part of the bid process, yep.
Okay, so would that be included in the smother?
Yep, I guess, I would assume that the motions for all these FEMA sites that are, if there's some that are questionable, that are still underwater today, then I will bring them to you guys, and we'll decide on the ones that are underwater then.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, do the sites, the FEMA sites, that we got the extension until November three, two thousand and sixteen on. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries.
Okay, the next one, that Morris Township Bridge, we did put in, uh, for that project, but we got a response back that they want some pictures and something else, but two things they want.
One, just to rewrite the justification for it, just to why the rest on the, your reasons is decreasing load capacity.
So we're, we're in the process of getting those pictures now and, and, uh, getting that taken through. Along with that, we got a letter from, oh, that's not Morris Township. But anyway, that's, to finish that bridge up, that's where we set now, is we're doing some more legwork, and then trying to get that project approved through around fifty-six money. But there's the other Mahoney Bridge, it's all around bridges, we got a, uh...
Mahoney.
Yeah. Anyway, we got a letter from the state saying that that's a alert three bridge, which means we need to do something, have some kind of a plan, that's what we're gonna do, and that, that's our plan, is to replace this bridge, so, um, I don't think this requires a signature, just, I need to send our work plan to Bismarck, seeing what we intend to do there. But just so you know, that was a, that letter was addressed to the chairperson, so, got a heads up there, basically, the...
And that's one we're gonna culvert, right?
That's right, we're waiting for the water board to give us a recommendation on the culvert sites.
You're gonna replace it with culvert?
Yep.
The water works with hydraulics or have the stability condition, you hydraulic analysis on it.
Okay.
And they have done the two sites on Ramsey eight and Ramsey four, north of eight, and both of those are big enough.
The culvert side?
It's the same with that.
Okay.
Everybody get that, those two box culverts, everybody hear that? The one on eight and the one on four, that, uh, group was in trying to get size bigger, they are big enough, both of them. According to the hydraulic analysis that the state water commission did.
Okay.
And the water board is dealing with that. They've had a public meeting with the residents up there, and I assume they'll have more public meetings, but they are dealing with that issue.
It's, it's pretty rare that you ask for any less.
Ah, great.
So it, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask for more.
Right.
They were still talking about putting some haulers down.
Yeah, well, much of the water board's talking about, I honestly don't know, I, I've been on that discussion.
There's, there's, there's more haulers out there that's talked about, I don't know if that's gonna be done or not.
Right.
Well, yeah, that was one of the options they were looking at.
What, your call?
I got a copy on an email.
Okay.
That's, they're looking at other, other things. Size wise, it doesn't necessarily need to be bigger.
But in case the landowners are into disagreement that the water commission didn't look at the complete drainage basin that is contributing to it. So the water commission would get what their GIS, they're mapping, came up with as far as the drainage basin, but the landowners said, no, the water comes here, over here, and so they're gonna take another look at it.
Okay, next item is, uh, oh, windshields in our three John Deere mortar grinders are, they're not busting anything, but after a couple of years of snow pounding, it gets pissed really, really bad, and then when the sun hits them, it's just almost impossible to see, so we need to put three windshields in those John Deeres, and they're gonna cost about twelve hundred dollars.
Each?
Each?
No, all three together.
So four dollars a week?
Yeah, motion to approve the windshield.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign.
And we haven't set up a date for the permanent road meeting, so there's nothing to report there, to talk about.
Talked about the date, or?
I emailed Mike and he never responded, I sent the information to both Creel and Martha Creel, and I haven't heard back from them either. I suppose they're waiting, have a meeting with their board or whatever.
Get through all the equalization processes.
So I'll just keep on pushing that issue. Um, the next one is need to order a lot of culvert, so they're gonna cost nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars, eleven cents.
I'll move to the road.
Say it.
Roll call, please. Martins?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Lyfon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Isor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Culvert places went down just a little bit this year, so. Okay, the last, uh, well, I got more after this, but the signing of some maintenance agreements, we only had three come in, the growth, cover grow, and prospect came in, so we can have a motion to sign those three.
I'll make a motion to sign those agreements, in a second.
So we're still waiting on dry lake and freshwater?
Yep, and we've made phone calls, but struggling.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries.
They want us to do the work, it's just that we can't get the paperwork, you know?
Okay.
We had a construction and maintenance agreement on Ramsey County eight B, so that'd be the light from Ramsey three to the gravel part on four that were paved and, except for using federal aid money, we have to sign this construction and maintenance agreement with, uh, DOT before we can go to bid. And I have to be in to Bismarck by April fifteenth, so the chairman's already signed it, Elizabeth signed it, and Lonnie? Lonnie's assistant, maybe?
Yeah, Martin signed it, Lonnie's not, I think, most.
Because I have to be in by the fifteenth, and it's just a thing that, a hoop we have to jump through, so. I guess I'll hopefully make a motion to go ahead.
Be nice to have a motion on both of that, yep.
Motion to approve the maintenance agreement?
The maintenance?
Yep, construction maintenance.
Construction maintenance.
Okay.
Oh, did you say that yet? I thought you did not.
I didn't.
Olsen, okay.
Did you pay more, I guess?
He did pay more.
Did you pay more, right?
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries.
Okay, the last thing I have is the, uh, this during agreement or a contract that Paul has handed out for Ramsey County eight from Webster, the tree. Looks good. Does, yeah. No, it's fairly, it's a fairly good price, too, so. Who's it from?
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries.
All right. Let's, we'll get started.
Um, yeah, did you find out anything about the, starting the, um, new shop in Edmore? Did you get a phone call? They were gonna talk about it up in the health department about what the cheapest, easiest, best route was gonna be?
Yeah, you know, I, I forgot to talk to, once I get there. But yeah, I think, you know, after Alan mentioned that, putting in a pump and pumping it that, you know, I already thought of that, you know, that sounds like a good idea to me, so I just need to get prices on what that's gonna cost.
It's, it's kind of a combination of the two, they have their own holding tank, but you pump it into the city sewer system. And now you don't have to truck out there once a year to pump it and, and, and take it out to the, um, the building.
Oh, as opposed to just having a whole system?
Right.
Right.
Well, you'd still have a, would it pump the whole first, or would you have a double tank system, where you could go from the solids to liquids, and then the liquids get pumped into the sewer, so it means you still have to pump, correct?
Right.
It'd be like a secondary holding tank that you roll through a drain field, it's just we're not gonna put a drain field.
It'd be just like a regular system, only it just gets pumped instead of, instead of a creek, or...
Yeah, so you wouldn't have a drain field to work with, which, that would work.
There's no drain fields involved in...
No drain field there, yeah.
And I'll get estimates on what that'll cost for the next meeting, I guess.
Yeah, that's good, it's a good solution.
I've got, I think I've got plenty of time, I just still want to get a high vehicle.
You could survive at one, the first tank for, for a while, and pump it.
Then did you guys think anymore about whether or not though you, you should take those three lots that Edmore's willing to give us, or leave it alone, or...
What's the square footage on those?
I think they're about a hundred and fifty square, like, three lots there, but they're only like...
They're fifty wide, so there's a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty?
Yep.
Which isn't very big. Is there any possibility that we would ever expand in that, in Edmore, or, or have a secondary building for...
We may put maintenance piles there, like a gravel pile.
Put gravel piles or something like that there, would that be okay with the city, or?
Yeah, I'd want them there.
Um, you know, but...
Well, it would look a lot better than what's there right now, but...
There's stuff on the street away, but I'm not saying that that's okay either, but, yeah.
See if we can find a use for them, and if they're gonna give them to us, it's hard not to take them, but...
We don't get any tax revenue from them, do we? There's, you know, it's not like we're losing tax revenue by, by...
Right, more or...
They just let them grow to grass right now, okay? But they just let them grow to grass, but you know, they...
Yeah, yeah. They're pretty messy.
Yeah. The trees are losing their branches.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't have to make a decision now, I mean, I wanna, I, I guess I'd like to wait and see what we're gonna do for the sewer system, 'cause there's no reason to take on more maintenance if we don't have to, unless we need it.
We'll just leave it on that, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, so you got that covered. Anything else? Uh, who want unfinished business about that information? Do we need anyone there? Uh, yeah, we, we haven't gotten an opinion from Alan, he's been gone, he'll be back tomorrow, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have these listed. And did we already talk about the under, annual meeting? We did, we didn't make a decision if you're anxious to a proxy or if you make sense on it, or...
So, they don't need to begin a basic...
Um, FEMA.
Please send a proxy, I'd, I'd like to, uh, make the motion to proxy for first meeting.
We have a second.
He was the one already, correct?
Yep.
Then I'll sit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Um, new business, cell phone discussion?
Um, I did visit with, I should say, email all the department heads that have, like the highway, social services, insurance department, and they would like to stay with AT&T, and I've been working with a Pam, and I'm trying to get her to come out and visit with us and give us a better deal on the cell phone, so at this point, it'll be still under follow-up if we were...
We'll put it under unfinished for the next...
I mean, it is, yeah, okay.
We have a letter of transfer?
Second.
We need one in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same sign. Approve the West Day Levy Assessment Billings. You've got a copy of that?
Mine's about the same, but we get a lot of water and have to pump it, so... Motion to approve. I'll second.
Jim, what are you writing down?
I'm gonna zoom in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Holdson?
Sorry.
Holdson?
Aye.
Lightcon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mertens?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Uh, approve the construction and maintenance agreement?
That's the one that Kevin talked about.
That's the one Kevin talked about, we've already done that?
Done that.
Uh, construction insurance for the Lakewood search and rescue building.
I put that on my desk, um, it's functional.
Where exactly is this covered?
This is the Zurich one?
Um, this is basically, it's, we run our insurance just to cover, if anything happened while the building is going up, say we had a big windstorm and it's blown over, or I, if, I asked her some questions and I put it in the email, um, and she said it's attached to that. Um, women's risk will cover most situations that could happen, such as wind, fire, et cetera, so, and Steve thinks that we should get it on the building before it starts construction, which will be soon, I guess they're gonna start pouring the cement, um, so...
Move it, move it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, or we'll...
You can put that, put that in a minute, so I'll watch it.
Yep.
And then ninety-eight dollars? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Holdson?
Nine hundred and eight dollars.
Nine hundred and eight dollars? Did I say either way?
Probably, probably, it's a crowd in here, so...
Okay. And, motion carries, we have, we have a home state credit?
Motion to approve it.
Second.
We have one in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Uh, because, um, I just wanna add one thing to new business, the, you guys got a copy of the letter that we sent to the state health department regarding the Dakota Bean, Greg Bean plant? It, it was responded to the same day it was received, they called me on the phone and told me that, that we would, uh, that they would be sending an M&Ms visitor out. I was under the assumption that they had already done, uh, air quality control test, hasn't been done, nobody... No, yeah, they didn't bring anything with them when they were in the first town, so I don't know what we're gonna compare it with. He didn't know how to respond to the second part of the letter, asking them to clean up the mess that had already been made, but was on the side of the people of, of Prairie, so, um, I guess we'll just go wait and see what findings they have, and we'll go from there.
They, they, uh, offered to wash our shop, I assume all the buildings in town, I don't know about vehicles or anything, but...
They outwash the Prairie County shop?
Prairie charter.
And it wasn't the report that they, nobody had taken up on it on the homes yet, but some of the cars, I think they took the car wash tickets.
They took the car wash tickets, yes. I, it's pretty, it's pretty well all over town, I mean, I, the north end of town even has it without prevailing winds, so it's, it's north of the tracks, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of people. They have a, you know, they have a little tournament issue. And then we'll move on to visitors and delegations.
Yes, ma'am. Well, you guys, anybody knows, anybody knows why I'm here, so, I'd just like to start by saying, apparently, I need to restate some of the reasons for me being here, because I'm hearing things from the board saying things like, I don't know where this is coming from, and I don't know why he's doing this. Uh, what I can't figure out is the ignorance, if you really don't believe, done nothing wrong down there at the LAC. Honestly, if either it's the case, both are equally disturbing, as you guys know. I'm here most importantly to speak with my wife, Danny Deegan. I don't want people to forget what happened and how it happened, especially the fact that you three were Mr. Reynolds. You made mistakes and affected people at the LAC, workers and families, not only mine. You enhanced, you inflamed an already difficult situation, and now when someone comes to question you, the board, one board member likes to hide, one likes to ignore, and another wants to ask about why I'm here, and why she doesn't know why I'm here. But the credit I will give to you, Mary, is that when I do speak, at least you listen and maintain eye contact, for that I thank you. The other reason I'm here is to ask legitimate questions regarding the current situation out at the LAC. After all, the new director was hired, uh, to fix the problems, not add to them. And why am I interested? I believe you asked that last time I questioned the board about being on the agenda. Um, I've got a long history with the LAC, I've worked there since two thousand and two as the defensive tactics instructor for the jail. Prior to that, I was a law enforcement officer for three years, so I do have an interest in that place. It does not appear you are very informed about what actually goes on down there. At the last meeting, several things were pretty clear to me, one being the moving of visitors and delegates from the beginning of the meeting to the end. My knowledge is always going to be getting, but it doesn't bother me that I have to wait and take time out of my schedule to be there, so it's not an issue. Clearly, you don't want me here. I also mention, or I also like to mention the attempt at an apology or an explanation, whatever you spoke prior to me speaking last time. Clearly, it was damage control over your past actions, not just you, but, you know, other board members as well. It is a damn shame that I need to resort to non-local, non-biased newspapers and TV interviews to get this story out in the open, both of which contacted me. I, I don't enjoy coming here speaking, I really don't. I'd like to think that things would get better and that we could talk and discuss, but apparently not. Honestly, I don't know how any of you would feel if this had happened to you. I'm not expecting any sympathy, I could get any sympathy from you. Families were ripped apart, not just mine, people that I don't particularly care for or get along with. You affected a lot of people, jobs been lost, some families aren't even together anymore, and you sit here all oblivious to the pain that you all cuss and are involved with. It's sad, really, and I can only assume that this cycle will continue until new blood is elected into your positions, we as a family can only hope, and that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you for letting me speak, and I'll be back next meeting, unless you have any questions, little. I did have some time left. Thank you.
Again, I guess I need to reiterate, uh, for purposes of clarification, that this board has been directed to not respond to Mr. Deegan's comments. Clearly, they are meant to inflame, they, um, are causing, you know, some discomfort to those of us who, who don't wish to be seen as, um, homewreckers, and that's all I can say.
Unfortunately, the truth does inflame, so I'll continue to come back. And I understand you can't talk about the issues with the ongoing investigation by the labor department, but issues that you talk about are involved with that. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Dan?
No, about a year ago, I was given permission to mow a property where my house used to be in exchange for access, understand that it's changed?
Yes, it is.
Okay, may I ask why? You just...
We got a, um, an opinion from FEMA, and we were told that there would be no access to FEMA purchase lots. There are, there were accusations made, um, by people out there about who gets to drive on it, who doesn't, who gets to put their full lift on it or their dock on it, who doesn't, who gets to plant a tree on it, who doesn't. We are not in the business of, um, settling quarrels between neighbors, and therefore we, um, we have determined that we will follow to the letter, the FEMA regulations, that means no setting foot on FEMA property, no doing any improvements, no digging, no, um, mowing, no putting anything on there, and that's where we're at.
And that also includes all the other properties in Prairie and Penn that they mow there, too?
I guess we'll handle those as they come along.
Okay.
If I get a, if I get a complaint, as, has happened here, then that's how we'll move forward.
I can say that the trees that were planted, and they were planted there by a son by accident, because I was recovering from a hip replacement, and he thought he was being nice to help and complain of in the wrong area, that's why those trees were planted there. And I explained that to, to Mark and also Kevin, you know, a few months ago, and that they'd be taken care of, but, but since that's the case, I won't even touch them, so... But, uh, I know who you're talking about, and, um, if he steps foot on there, he's not allowed to neither?
No.
Okay. All right, and there is some evidence that he was doing some stuff on there, if anything...
No, there is not any evidence that he's done anything on there. I was out there today, I looked at the site, and there isn't, and nothing done.
Okay, I was a curious...
The county shares department out there at, at your request on Saturday, was it Saturday or Sunday? Um, never.
I don't know, there was dirt on the one side.
And there, there's a, there's some black dirt there from last year, but no, indeed, that is not, that is not anything that has happened since we made this determination, and therefore, I, you know, quite frankly, again, we are not here to settle petty disputes between neighbors, and we are going to follow the FEMA guidelines.
Well, I, I, I will say that dirt that was on there was not on there a few weeks ago, 'cause I'm out there working on my other properties, and he did remove trees from the property that I wasn't supposed to remove, so, anyways, but, that's fine, I was just curious.
If I, if I, if I am given proof of that, I will deal with it.
Okay, well...
As will the shares department and the, and the, um, the highway department and the, um, the center of planning.
Okay, that's fine, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Man, is there anything else coming for the board tonight?
I guess if I could have a minute or two now, Chairman. The NDSU, uh, ran economic report on the aid loss, it came out just today, something that we've asked, uh, Dwight Ockery and the other, uh, economic economists from NDSU to, uh, help us out with on an annual basis, come up with, um, an economic impact of the loss of agricultural production in the Devil's Lake Basin, and as you can see through there, it's, uh, about a hundred and thirty-four million dollar total economic loss, a little over a hundred and thirty thousand acres of, uh, production out of, or farmland out of production, and, uh, just something I'd wanna share with the county commission. On another note, uh, a third, has been the date set for the outlets advisory committee meeting in Carrington. Uh, I understand that's county commission meeting, the water board meetings, uh...
County commission meeting, every county and state?
Yes.
Yeah.
Better to call the governor about it, don't change it.
Apparently, they're gonna want a commissioners there, huh?
Yeah, it was, uh, I, I'm not sure, and they have it on county commission and water resource district day, as well as, um, in Carrington outside of Devil's Lake, so it's, um, we, we've often questioned that, but, um, and the western outlet was started yesterday, so, good, good news on the outlet fronts, uh, it started at a reduced flow, a hundred and twenty-five to a, uh, two-hundred CFS, and they'll ramp that up as scheduled warrant, and, uh, no indication of when the east end will be turned on, my guess would be, if they follow suit to last year, it'll be the day of the outlet advisory committee meeting. So, both the Ramsey County Water Resource District and the joint board have drafted letters to the governor's office, uh, thanking them for their aggressive approach to the outlets last year, and ask them to continue that approach again this year, um, something that maybe the Ramsey County commission would be interested in doing as well. So, they have a consensus of what we want from this area as far as outlet operations are concerned. On another note, on the planning commission, Commissioner Heisler, Commissioner Mertens were at the steering committee meeting last night as we move forward with a comprehensive plan update, and I'm not sure if Mertens or Bill would have anything to add about that, it was a good, well-attended meeting, with mostly the committee members present, and we will have the meeting tonight, uh, in about twenty short minutes, the, uh, future Ramsey County comprehensive planning meeting, uh, and that is, uh, the community involvement. So, I don't take up any more of your time, hopefully I can wrap up your agenda and make it down to that. Um, their formal presentation will probably start around seven thirty, they thought, uh, they're gonna present some of the, let the community members look through some of the maps and some of the other information that they're gonna be presenting, and from my understanding, Mr. Borinson is part of that... And from my understanding, Mr. Boronson is part of that team that's helping out with that. So, Paul, you have anything to add?
I guess I can go back and speeden that effort and smooth out that last night, so hopefully you can...
Ah, it's progressing nicely, so thank the commission for their foresight in moving forward with that plan and approving budget for it, so... Any questions?
Paul gave us a little bit of history as to how he's handled other comprehensive plans and stuff. He's done quite a few, and shared some information with us last night that gives me a lot of confidence in his abilities. And I think there's gonna be four public meetings, one now, one in June, one in September, and possibly one in December. And in between them, there might be some steering committee meetings and stuff. And one thing interesting that got brought up last night is all the gray hairs that were in it on the steering committee. And so, what we did is we decided that we would solicit some, another committee underneath or whatever, or some kind of, that we could send emails and stuff to and have them answer questionnaires and stuff and send in. So, if anybody has any young entrepreneurs or anybody interested in the forward view of the colony and stuff like that, give us their names and we'll add them in, and we'll get them on the email list, and they'll be able to have some input. So, it sounds like it's gonna be a fun, fun job.
Has there been any interest from townships on possibly partaking in the offer that they could piggyback off of the process?
I know Southman and Watkins is looking at doing that. And updating their comprehensive and their zoning plan. So, and they had representative in attendance last night, and they're planning on being there again tonight. And hopefully, that message is getting sent out to townships that, you know, we want them to be involved and have that opportunity, so... And Bill is very well the younger generation. This is a future, this is a plan for the future of Ramsey County. And, you know, it'll only be moved, the younger residents that are gonna help shape that future. So, you know, if you know of anybody that's, you know, Mr. Lightman yourself and others in that generation.
I got two people.
Well, you know, the generation of 50 and under is the, is the, they are the real stakeholders in the future of Ramsey County. And so, the more interest we can get in what they see as the direction we need to edit, the better, the better equipped we'll be to do that. I see that the materials from last night are in our packets. If anybody is not able to come tonight, at least please go through the questions that were raised, the statistics that were already brought out, and look at, and look at them. There were questions about a lot of the statistics. For instance, it shows that the average farm in Ramsey County is 480 acres. We're finding it hard to believe that. But we're finding it, you know, we need to, we need to get better statistics so that we know, you know, for instance, how big the average farm in Ramsey County actually is. Will that make a difference in our comprehensive plan? Perhaps it will.
Maybe some things haven't changed, but something like that, maybe, you know, absolutely, yes. And I think a lot of, a lot of the information KLG has provided with Steve Home, and they're making it accessible on the county's website. There's a link right on the homepage. And so, as we progress through this process, the more information that they gather will be put on there. And eventually, I think a survey, electronic survey will be available on there online, as well as Elizabeth has agreed to allow printed copies to be picked up and dropped off at the auditor's office. So, people that don't have internet access or choose not to do that, we'll be able to do a coming survey that we come up with that way as well. So, it's moving together nicely on the work so far that KLG has put on, so...
Well, the question asked at that point, where the information on like 480 acres was compiled from?
I think it's all the SCS or...
Yeah, I mean, and that's what, that's what my assumption would be. And the 480 acres would make sense then, because it's compiled by farm number, not by farm number.
Yeah, exactly.
Farm numbers were rolled down to a lot smaller acreages, depending on how it was rolled out in the system when we acquired that land for farming purposes. So, there's, the actual operators are larger than that. That's a harder way to combine.
The difference between operators, farmers, and so on.
I always discussed you.
Discuss. And of course, one of the biggest things that was discussed was the water situation, the lake. How much of that are we putting in our comprehensive plan? It was, it was mentioned that maybe we should put in a comprehensive plan what we do if the lake rises to 1460. And when you look at the map, there won't be much left of Ramsey County at 1460. So, there's some serious questions that need to be, you know, need to be addressed and looked at and acted on, and that's why, that's why we input from all the stakeholders of this colony, not just the city. We're also working hard to, they're going to interview the mayors of all the smaller cities. I guess I didn't ask them who's gonna do the mayor of Devil's Lake. But the villages were also listed on there, so the unincorporated.
And I think we'll find that the lake's gonna have a big, big portion of that comprehensive plan, because it has a fluctuating history with it.
Yes.
And it has a, and whatever elevation it decides to be at, it's gonna have an effect on the colony. So, it'll have a role within that comprehensive plan. With that, I've taken up more of my five minutes, so I came to the county, and I hope to see everybody that can make it downstairs in a short period of time.
Thanks, Jeff. And a reminder that the Northeast nine county board meeting is tomorrow night at 6:15. Have dinner first. Dinner's not being served. Because some people couldn't get there till later, so that's why I have to get some.
And I feel like those are all gonna be there in case the insurance is over. So, it's gonna be their thing. If you wanted to just mention, who's all there?
Jerry Trainer, Donell, Ishka, and then somebody down there.
I think so, too.
Before we die, we should send a letter in our class. Water board or state water board. Thank you, man, for getting it all the way.
Maybe we can get a copy of the water board's letter and come up with something and get it done.
We just wanna thank them for their continued use of the pumping stations, or do we wanna tell them where we wanna go?
We might even have a...
We did tell them.
I know, but I would reiterate.
Yeah. And both the city...
It's on our books.
Well, both the city and county have the same number, yeah.
We might have a letter on file that's only in support of that, and we can come up with something. See what, if there's anything new with theirs, and see if we can meld something together.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay. Move to your...
I have one, one, one bit of information today. I talked to Tom Reine at the Law Enforcement Center. We currently have 91 inmates. We have actually turned away inmates. People are, I think it's the Bureau, I'm not sure who it is, but it's the Bureau of Prisons wanting to bring us six. We had to turn them down because we are currently full, so just wanted that out there.
And I think that would be information forthcoming at the Law Enforcement Center board meeting tomorrow morning about how many prisoners are actually needed in order to break even, as was requested. So, thanks, Ed, for... Thank you.